It's ousted and then it's like all love.
All love.
It's really a dance party.
Oh, we'll find out. Yeah. Still one of my favorite of all time is sports night.
Good, yeah.
I'm not sports night. Yeah, yeah.
That's what I felt about that.
Okay, that's one of the positives of this guy.
Good evening, Cambie, and welcome to the first and only Cambie City Council Candidates Virtual Forum. I'm Tyler Frankie with the Cambie Current, now here at this Cambie and CambieFirst.com. I'm joined as host tonight by Kyle Lang of the Cambie Area Chamber, whom we'll hear from in a moment. This is a unique event in Cambie's history. Starting tomorrow, October fourteenth, ballots will go out for what many believe to be a pivotal election in our nation's history. It is also a pivotal moment for Cambie. Our community is in the midst of unprecedented business and population growth, bringing both challenges and opportunity. More recently, the coronavirus pandemic and historic wildfires have made their marks with rising unemployment, poverty, homelessness, and other pressing issues. It is still hard to believe just how much life in Cambie has changed in the past year. Bringing back a Cambie that is just as strong and active as it was before, if not more so, will take us all working together, and will take strong, bold, compassionate, and visionary leaders. Tonight, you will hear from all six candidates for city council. With four out of six seats open, voters will have a chance to truly set a course for the Cambie they would like to see.
We have the technical difficulties here for a moment. All right, good evening, Cambie. I'm Kyle Lang, Director of the Cambie Area Chamber of Commerce. We're beginning to get started tonight as we have a lot of candidates to hear from and important matters to discuss. But first, I'd like to share a little bit about tonight's format. Organizers have taken great care to develop an event intended to be as fair and equitable as possible to each candidate, while remaining mindful of the coronavirus restrictions that remain in effect for our county to help ensure everyone stays safe and healthy. Tonight's event is being presented live thanks to Cambie CTV Channel Five, which is also hosting us tonight, as well as Direct Link and Wave Broadband. There is no in-person attendance. Candidates will take turns introducing themselves and answering questions from the hosts. Each candidate will have three minutes for closing. We want to be clear that tonight's forum is not a debate. Among the ground rules that candidates have agreed to tonight is that they will not speak directly to or ask questions of their opponents. Candidates have been asked to use their time to speak about their own experience, their own qualifications, their own plans, and their vision for the city of Cambie. By luck of the draw, Chris Banks has been chosen to go first. We'll now go back to Tyler Frankie, who will ask the first question.
All right, welcome, Chris. Yes, please come to the podium. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
The first question is going to be an easy one. Please introduce yourself, your relevant work experience, and tell us why you're running for Cambie City Council.
Good evening. My name is Chris Banks, and I am running for city council. I'd like to begin first by thanking the people who put this on, the Cambie Chamber of Commerce and CTV Five and the Cambie Current. I also, more importantly, want to thank all of my opponents, or I guess competitors, not everyone here is an opponent, for running for office. I teach government in Cambie High School for, this is my twenty-first year now. I've been teaching government every single year. The most important thing I tell my students is that it's important for our democracy, for ordinary people, to step forward and volunteer, even if it's a sacrifice, for the better of our society. And everyone here has done that, and I'm so proud and thankful for that. I grew up outside of Cambie, unfortunately not in Cambie. My dad bought a home in Wrong Town, and I went to Malino Schools and Malala High School. And all of my upbringing looked with envy at Cambie. Cambie had a pool, which I started using here in nineteen seventy-four. Cambie, you know, had a Seven-Eleven when I was in high school, Malala did. Cambie had a McDonald's. And these are seemingly superficial, I don't think the pool is. But Cambie always seemed better, and I think it's because it was. And that is a part of why I'm running for Cambie. I purposefully chose to live in this town. I looked for a teaching job here because this was my first choice to raise my family and to work. And basically, I just love Cambie, Oregon, and that's why I'm running for city council here. As I said, I've been teaching at Cambie High School for twenty, again, this is my twenty-first year. I've been involved in all sorts of different activities, coaching and advising clubs. I bring to this city council race no political platform, no political agenda. I'm not beholden to any special interest. I've taken money from nobody for this race. I am interested in looking at all issues fairly. I think Cambie, Cambie City Council is a nonpartisan position, and I applaud that. The main reason I'm running is to provide opportunity for voters to have choice. I think that there are some clear choices in this campaign. I would encourage all of our voters to look at the voter's pamphlet, to study what it is that is motivating the candidates for running for city council. My motivation is simply to continue the excellent governance that Cambie has enjoyed now for a long, long time. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Next, we'll have Counselor Tracy Hensley. Same question. I forgot to mention, for this portion, candidates are being given three minutes. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. Good evening, Cambie. Thank you for tuning in. And my thanks as well to CTV Five and Cambie Area Chamber of Commerce and the Cambie Current for organizing and producing this forum tonight. My name is Tracy Hensley. I have lived in Cambie for twenty-four years and have had the pleasure of serving this great community as your city councillor for nearly ten years. I have and continue to volunteer in many areas of this community, examples being the American Legion as an auxiliary member and my most recent project being a founding member of the Cambie Suicide Prevention Task Force. I have over twenty years in sales, customer service, and hospitality, and a decade in grassroots politics. These experiences have given me seemingly a unique ability to listen to all voices, even if theirs doesn't sound like my own. I take this job seriously and approach it pretty hands-on. I can often be found talking with folks at a park or coffee shop, or you'll see me on the side of the road on a field trip with Public Works and the Traffic Safety Commission. I learned quickly that Romeos is much more appropriate footwear for this job than my high heels that I love. And because of my approachability, my kids also quickly learned that there's no quick trip to the store from home. I believe as councillors, we are elected to work for you. I believe that I have a responsibility to my neighbors and our business owners, who trusted me with their vote, to be committed to protecting our livability, our values, our public safety, and ownership rights. I have worked diligently to keep my commitment to you and believe my record reflects that. It is my desire to continue this work for you and our community, and would again appreciate your vote.
Thank you, Counselor Hensley. Next up, we have Counselor Spoon.
Earrings make math a little more problematic.
I managed to avoid that.
Yes, hold on one second.
Try it with glasses, though.
Let's take the earrings off. Good evening, and thank you, organizers. Thank you, fellow candidates. It really makes me happy to see so many people interested in serving our community. And thank you to the voters and viewers who are interested in learning more about where our community has gone or where it's been and where it could go. My name is Sarah Spoon. I am a parent of four kids, three of whom are still in Cambie schools, and one who is a junior at Pacific University. I often say that I have a common Cambie story. I was raised out, just outside of town. I went to Karis Elementary School, Ackerman Junior High, before there was a Baker Prairie, and then Cambie High School. When we lived on the farm out by Karis, we raised a variety of farm animals, and I was a member of 4-H, where I showed my Suffolk sheep at the Clackamas County Fairground every summer. I participated in Cambie Kids' Sports and met a lot of fellow students before I moved over to Ackerman in basketball and in softball. When I was in the seventh grade, my family moved to a filbert orchard, and I spent about this time every year sitting on the jump seat of a harvester, pulling sticks off of a conveyor belt as quickly as I could so that only the filberts would fall into the tub that we sold to Blue Diamond. In high school, I was the president of the Speech and Debate Team. And when I was seventeen, I started my life of service. My first volunteer job was at Our House of Portland, which is a residence for people in the late stages of AIDS, before there was a drug cocktail, when many of them had been abandoned by their families and loved ones, and these were their final days, months, or weeks. After high school, I was recruited to compete at Syracuse University in policy debate. And from there, I spent some time living on the East Coast, some time in Jackson, Wyoming. And no matter where I lived, there was only one place I ever called home. When it was time to raise my own family, I thought about all the communities I had lived in, the things I loved most about them, but mostly the things I missed about Cambie. And so when I chose where I wanted to live to raise my kids, there was no other place I wanted to be. Now, I own my own small downtown Cambie business. But what I actually do is help people who have a common goal but see things from a different perspective. And that's not very indifferent to being a part of city council. I'm a community-focused servant leader. Both before city council and continued on now, I've been the member of a variety of Chamber of Commerce committees. I'm the volunteer high school debate coach at Cambie High School. I run Cambie Movies in the Park, and I served on the Lamont Falls Heritage Area Coalition Board of Directors. But when I think about Cambie and who I am and how I fit into the story here, I fit like a lot of other people. And that's that while I may have said at seventeen that I was going to go to the big city and never come back to this small town, I chose it for my own family, and my vision remains the same that it always has, which is to be a part of shaping a community where my kids would choose to come back to raise their kids, just as I chose to come back to raise mine.
Thank you, Counselor Spoon. Next, we have Jason Patton. Welcome.
Good evening. Hello, my name is Jason Patton, and I am running for a position on your city council. Before I begin, I would like to thank the individuals who helped put this event together, my fellow candidates for showing up tonight and participating, but most importantly, you, the folks at home who are tuning in to this today. I grew up in a very rural town in western New York. As a teenager, I chose to get involved in the community. I was a member of most of the clubs and organizations when I was in high school, from being a peer helper to the president of the National Honor Society. And I was also very active in my community, from helping with our annual Fourth of July celebration to being a member of the Junior Volunteer Fire Department. When I moved away to college, I took that passion with me. By the time I graduated from SUNY Kobolskill, I was a resident assistant, the student government president, which afforded me the opportunity to be the only non-governor-appointed representative to the college council and a member of the SUNY Student Assembly, which is a statewide-run SUNY or Student Government Association. Within a few months of moving to Cambie fifteen years ago, I came to City Hall and asked how I could get involved to help the community. Shortly thereafter, I was appointed to a position on the Cambie Urban Renewal Advisory Board. Since then, my passion for helping the community has only grown. I am currently a member of the Cambie Lions Club, where I've served as president. I've been a member and president of the Oregon Association of Nursery Greenhouse Chapter, and I've been on the Cambie Budget Committee for about seven years now, two of which I have been the chairman. As far as my background and work experience, I've worked in ornamental horticulture ever since I graduated from college. As a sales rep and sales manager, I understand what it means to listen to what folks have to say and, oh, there we go, to listen to what folks have to say and take that to heart. As a logistics manager of perishable goods, I understand what it's like to have a problem come up, need to troubleshoot and solve that problem, and then act with a solution. And as a volleyball official, I know what it takes to listen, to understand the rules, and apply them evenly across the court. In summary, everything I have done over the past years, from my successes to my failures, have honed me into an excellent leader. And with your vote, I would love to bring that leadership and passion for involving others to your city council. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jason. Next, we have James Heeb.
Let me get suited up here.
Yep. Welcome, James.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd like to start off by saying thank you to everybody that's tuning in with us this evening. Instead of watching something, I guess, a little more entertaining, you're hanging out with us. Thank you to, you know, everybody putting this on. It's a good opportunity for me and all of us. I, yes, I've never held a public office before, so I really have no voting record that, but I can tell you a little bit about myself. I was, I guess, my history here in Cambie goes way back before I was even around. My parents, they were married here in town. And I didn't actually live in town initially because my dad was in the Army, and we moved all around the U.S. for, up till about third grade, we moved back to Cambie. Then I, yeah, lived here in town up until I joined the Marine Corps. And I spent a few years fighting over in the Middle East. I was inspired to join after nine eleven, and the two-year anniversary of nine eleven, I swore in and went and fought. Yeah, I, I don't know, I guess, where do I go with this? I, after the military, I came back, moved, moved just outside of town with my wife's family. They have, they're farming family, the Hoffman Family Farms. They have the Hoffman Dairy Garden outside of town here. And so I tried my, tried my hand at farming for a bit, and then, yeah, and then my, worked with my grandfather also. He's a small business owner doing construction. And then now I work with my mom. She's also a small business owner. And we run Building Blocks Early Learning Center just across the river in Wilsonville. We, so I wound up, other than my own four children, we have a little over a hundred kids that I take care of on a regular basis. But, yeah, it's, I don't know. I feel like that I have a lot of skills that I can bring to the table, and I'm good with people, and I can, I'm a good listener. And I like to think before I speak a lot of the time. So it's, I don't know, I just look forward to the opportunity of serving, serving my hometown and the town that I love. And, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, James. Great job. And finally, we have Jordan Tibbles. Jordan will be the last to give his introduction here tonight and then remain at the podium to be the first to answer our next question.
Thank you. So, good evening, Cambie. I want to start off, like my other candidates, thanking everyone for putting on this presentation for the voters. I want to thank each of my individual candidates that are running alongside me, as I like to put it, because you guys are stepping up in service to the community, and I will always applaud that. And I'm thankful for, most of all, the voters that are taking time to educate themselves in the voting process and learn about who these candidates are and who they want to best represent them, and so I want to applaud them. So, for those I haven't had the pleasure of meeting, my name is Jordan Tibbles. I recognize as a new candidate, I don't have a voting record or council experience to draw from. But frankly, if I didn't think that the council could use fresh perspective and fresh eyes on things, I wouldn't be running. So that is what drove me to run. So instead, I'll start off with a little about myself. I'm a Christian, a father, a husband, a veteran, a fisherman, and a dog lover. I served in the United States Marine Corps, which to this day is one of the greatest honors of my life. Upon leaving service, I attended Oregon State University, where I graduated with a Bachelor of Science in Business Administration, focusing on international business. It was during that time that the two most impactful moments happened in my life. The first was, I met the love of my life, a woman who grew up in Cambie at the time who was named Molly Huserick. The other was I was diagnosed with Hodgkin's lymphoma. I believe that both of these experiences continue to bless me to this day. The first, for obvious reasons, my wife, for those of you who have met her. That goes without saying, she's a blessing each and every day that I get to spend with her. The latter, because it gave me the perspective that if I were to leave this world today, would I be happy with the impact I left? And I've been able to pursue that endeavor ever since. After battling through chemotherapy and finishing my college degree at the same time, I pursued a career in tech sales. While I found success, I was not particularly passionate about technology, so I made a change and gambled on myself, taking a commodity trader trainee role, which wasn't guaranteed a job at the end, but I knew that buying crops on behalf of farmers and being able to give them that stability was a worthwhile endeavor and something I wanted to do. Fast forward today, I now only attain the position, but I'm the youngest department head by twenty-five years in my company. My daily job responsibilities consist of having a keen understanding of impacts of trade and agricultural economics and the ability to oversee safety and integrity of agricultural products while mitigating risk in transportation. I'm running for city council because I believe my military is not the end of my calling to service. My wife and I have a two-year-old, Grace, and a baby on the way. We would like them to be blessed with the same childhood experience growing up in Cambie as she had. Thank you.
Thank you, James.
All right, Jordan. Thank you for that presentation. We're going to move on to the first in a series of three questions. And so you're up first on this one. So the question for all the candidates as they come up on this next round is, what do you believe is the role of the Cambie City Council, both as a group as well as the individuals who serve on it?
Thank you for the question, Kyle.
Yeah.
I believe the central role of city council is the stewardship of our community. That means honoring its traditions while responsibly building for the future. As a group, council members should put their individual ambition and ego aside and work on behalf of their constituents. Each member will undoubtedly bring their own unique life experiences with them, but effective leadership is able to empower individuals with their personal strengths to accomplish a group mission, and that is serving the Cambie community. As an individual, a council member is charged with governing in the way they represented themselves to the voters. We all, while we all aim to do our best in serving the entire community, I believe we can all relate to the experience of having elected officials say one thing and then act and vote entirely different when they're in office. We should always be willing to listen and keep an open mind, while also being authentic, have integrity, and stand firm in your beliefs that citizens of Cambie elected you for.
Perfect. Yeah, thank you very much, Jordan. Appreciate that response. The next candidate up, we have James Heeb returning to the podium. And so, James, I'd like to just repeat the question for you. What do you believe is the role of the Cambie City Council, both as a group as well as the individuals who serve on it?
Yeah, I see the role of Cambie City Council as being to represent the citizens of Cambie. That's all the citizens of Cambie. I may not always, yeah, understand other people's perspectives. That's where I come back to, I listen, I'm quick to hear, slow to speak and slow to anger. I try to, you know, it's, just a, yeah, I, yeah, I really think it's to look out for the well-being of Cambie residents. That's the biggest goal. The, it's, I don't know, it would be my duty to make sure that all Cambie residents are thought of whenever I'm making decisions. And it's essentially, if something doesn't sit right with me, I'll have to speak out and make sure that the interests of Cambie residents are taken care of. So, a lot of things, it's, into researching this, there's a, the actual purpose of the city council is basically it checks and balances. There's lots of different jobs throughout Cambie, and I have some interest in education. I got some interest in the planning and the utility board and all that. But as being at the city council level, I feel like that I can have some say in each of these different agencies within town. And I, yeah, I just, I really just want to be able to serve my community. But, yeah, I think that's it.
Yeah, thank you very much. Appreciate that, James. The next person to return to the podium will be Jason Patton. Would you like me to repeat the question, Jason?
No, I think I've got it.
You got it?
Yes, thank you. I'm going to take this question into two parts. First, I'm going to start with the individual responsibilities of a councillor. I am familiar with the position. For those of you who may remember, I was elected back in two thousand nine and served until two thousand and eleven, when I had to step down to work obligations. But one thing I learned is that it is imperative that the individual city councillor interact with the community and the business leaders to ensure that their voices are being heard. The goal is to then take those concerns, questions, and suggestions back to the city council as a whole. It is also vitally important that you, as a city councillor, go back to those individuals that you communicated with in the community and the business to educate them on what is going on on the council and what is going on as far as the larger city plan with city management. A few years ago, one of the things that I have actually started to take up is, a few years ago, it was mentioned about the dog park. Nothing has come of that, and I have told folks that I've chatted with who have an interest in it that I will bring that up and see what's going on with that. Regarding the council as a whole, it is imperative that all the councillors listen to the individual councillors and what those that they represent have to say, which is the community. They then build a plan and move it forward through the city management. It is really the city management that then fills in the gaps of that plan and cedes it out to the individual departments. It is also the responsibility of the council to come back from time to time, make sure that plan is working, tweak it if necessary, and keeps it on course. The other thing is, as a governing body, the city council and its individuals are the face of the community. And so therefore, it is a responsibility for them to comport themselves in a manner that warrants the respect of that position, one that I am familiar with. Thank you very much.
Okay. We've had an online comment just from audience members at large. Just please try and make sure that you were addressing to the mic when you make your comments.
Oh.
It wasn't just particular to you, it was just a general comment from our viewers who are watching at home. So just be intentional about maybe a little turn to the mic as you speak. So next up, we have Counselor Sarah Spoon. Would you like me to repeat the question?
I think I remember it.
Okay, perfect.
So I'm going to handle this question in two parts. First, we'll talk about city council as a group. The charter, the city charter, is our governing document, and it's pretty clear on what our role is. City council simply directs three city employees, one of which is a city administrator, who then addresses everything else. And we have some, the power lies with us for things like the budget and policymaking. But I think the spirit of the question is, what are we supposed to be doing for the citizens? And for me, it's as simple as, the city council should do good for Cambie. As a group, that means we need to come together to create a goals, goals and vision that we can agree on so that we can direct the city administrator through our policy decisions and through our budget to execute those goals and visions. Most importantly, in a way, it's a commitment to teamwork. And that means, no matter who ends up on city council, they're going to be working with someone they disagree with. And that commitment to teamwork means that even when you don't see eye to eye, you work to get together. You try to meet, you try to have conversations, you listen. You know, listen to understand first, then try to be understood. As an individual, I think it means the commitment to doing the research and asking the questions. There are a lot of materials that come with this job. There are weeks that it takes hours to read through the council packet, and it's important that every councillor do, take the time to do that. We also need to actively seek input from the community and stakeholders. That doesn't mean waiting till someone contacts you. It means if there's an issue, being the person that proactively goes out and seeks that input and feedback from the people who are on the front lines dealing with the issue at hand. It also means being transparent, explaining how you came to your decision and feeling comfortable doing that. Being accessible is one of the most important things to me. I have sat down, there are people that have my cell phone number, email address, that are Republicans, Democrats, independents, and I'll sit down with any one of them and talk, and I learn from them as much as they learn from me. And also, it's about having the courage to dissent, that if there's something you disagree with, it takes courage to be the one person that says no. the one person that says no and explain why you're saying no, so that as a community, we can make better decisions moving forward.
All right. Thank you, councillor Spoon. The next person returning to the podium is councillor Tracy Hensley. Would you like me to repeat the question?
I think I remember it.
You got it down. All right. I just, I want to be polite and offer.
And I came prepared, so thank you. I believe that the role of municipal government is to keep public safety and infrastructure running smoothly so citizens can live their lives uninterrupted and unhindered. We don't and shouldn't involve ourselves in social issues. It's streets, sewer, public safety, parks, building codes, and the like that we focus our attention on. Our job is to make sure that the streets are safe, the parks are clean and kept, potholes are filled, and fences aren't too high. It's our job to be good stewards of the taxpayer dollar, and most importantly, hear the voices of all members of this community and create policy to best protect our treasured livability. As individuals, we bring our perspectives and our feedback from the community to the table and engage in conversation with our colleagues, but at the end of the day, we work as a team, and we stand behind whatever decisions are made at that point and juncture.
Thank you very much for that response. I know, everybody's like madly re-masking as they leave the podium. No, I appreciate that. And so now, we have candidate Chris Bangs returning to the podium. Do you need a reiteration of the question, sir?
No, I'm good, thank you. I will share with the folks back home that all of us were given the questions on an email a week or two ago, and so I think we're all well-versed in the question. I want to gripe just a little bit right now that councillor Hensley and Spoon have both kind of stolen my thunder here. They both said what I want to say, which is frustrating. The city charter, the city goals, these are all stated in the website here that the Canby City Council operates, and the responsibilities for the council are laid out. So, there isn't really a whole lot of variation allowable, and it is the role of the city council to concern itself with the livability of the people who live here, including parks, sewer water, electricity, streets, traffic, et cetera. You know, all those things were said already, so, you know, I do find that disappointing. I will say that the real focus of our council, as well as really any government agency, is the dream. And the dream in Canby is that you go to the high school and you get a job, or you go to college after high school and you get a job, and you get a job here in town, and you rent an apartment here until you can save enough money to buy a home, and then raise your own children here in Canby. And this has been happening now for more than a century in Canby, and it's one of the things that makes our town so strong and great. The council needs to worry about these kinds of issues. We've, in some respects, priced people out of our apartments and our houses. It's great for us who own homes to have our housing values go up so high, but it's difficult for our children to imagine trying to buy a house here in town now. And that's not the fault of the Canby City Council, but it is something I think that are, like a predominant issue that the council needs to focus on. Finally, on an individual level, I think that it's important, as has already been said, that councillors respond to all of our citizens' issues in all walks of life here in Canby, that we are not driven solely by political agendas or personal agendas. Thank you.
Excellent. And then, actually, if you could remain at the podium.
I'm going to remain at the podium.
I'm going to yield the microphone to Tyler Frankie.
All right. Slow again.
Slow again.
Chris, you'll be the first to answer this question. What are the, you just started to kind of go there. What are the three most pressing issues currently facing the city of Canby, and as a follow-up, which one do you feel is most critical and why?
I would like to take this opportunity now to steal the thunder of all of the people who are following in my footsteps here and trying to say all of the things that they're intending to say. I think growth management is one of our most important issues here in town, as I've said, and it does involve a whole bunch of different aspects, including our parks, traffic. Traffic's always been a struggle here in Canby as we grow. The strains that new homes add to our water and sewer services and so forth, even our schools to a certain extent, and that's not the purview of the city council. In addition, I think other issues include, well, like, for example, the water tastes funny here. Like, we should be concerned about why the water tastes a little funny, and I know that everyone on the council is. I would like to see the parks maintenance beefed up a little bit. We've got a real gem down there at the city park behind Safeway along the Malala River. It's really a pretty spot, but the bathrooms are really outdated. They need to be improved. We have issues with garbage there. It would be nice to have a, maybe a kayak launch at that park. I'd like to see us get into an intergovernmental agreement with other, well, the Canby, excuse me, the Malala River State Park, and see if we could improve the boat launch ramp there. I think that the council should concern itself with some of the business vacancies here in town, like the old Clackamas Federal Credit Union, the city hall, the fire hall, excuse me, the library, the city hall. We've got a couple of other vacant buildings, and I'd like to lure people in. I want to say that in terms of critical issues, I think the most critical issue is that we don't really hear the voices of all of the people who live in our town. None of us up here are Hispanics. People of color are now almost 25% of our population, but they're not on our school board or our city council and most of our government boards. I think we should improve that. And finally, I want to conclude by saying that we are blessed in this town, that we don't really have crises. Our crime rate is low, and we don't have violent protests in our streets, and so our problems are manageable, and I would look forward to helping tackle those. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Next, we'll hear again from councillor Hensley.
Thank you, Tyler.
Same question.
It's the three most pressing and...
And focus on one, yes. That's correct.
Focus on one. Well, okay.
You didn't have the benefit of everyone.
All right. Well, first of all, parks. We need to find a long-term solution for funding park maintenance. Once we find that solution, we can go forward with developing those planned parks, like the dog park, et cetera, that we've been talking about for years. Business development and retention. We need to be certain that starting a business in Canby is a simple process. A vibrant downtown and a thriving business community is crucial to the livability and vitality of our town, and I add business retention because our businesses will need our help in recovering from this COVID-19 crisis. Transportation is and will continue to be an issue. With our housing and business growth, transportation will be more and more of a challenge. A light Sequoia Parkway, a new road to connect the Pioneer Industrial Park to 99E, these are symptomatic fixes. Our TSP, Transportation System Plan, is a decade old. We need to revisit that and take into account the conversations that we're having at the Clackamas County Coordination Committee, thank you, Kyle, which I serve on with the mayor. We need to consider those conversations and the regional impacts on our transportation system. Now, which is most critical? That's like asking me which one's my favorite kid. All of these are critical. All impact our livability. We need to have all of these conversations, and we need to keep the retirement of the urban renewal district a priority, so that those funds can return to the appropriate budget lines, and that will assist us in funding these important solutions.
Thank you, councillor. Next, we'll welcome again councillor Spoon. Same question.
Thank you. I'm here. Okay. I'm going to go in what I think is the order of importance, if that helps. Number one is managing our growth. When the state took away our power to control growth in the direction we wanted to do it, when we wanted to do it, it became critical that we manage because we can only react to growth now. We can't, we can't manage it the way we want to. We can only react to it. The problem with that is that we have a broken development code, and this code allows developers to exploit loopholes in our code, and there's a couple of examples. One is that a developer can actually donate a small parcel of land and then write that off so that they don't have to pay us their fair share of the fees that attribute to the cost of that development coming into town, whether that's parks, sewer, streets. They have to pay a certain amount of fees, and when they donate a small parcel of land, that minimizes, if not takes away, what they have to pay. Another example is that there's a loophole in our tax code that allows them to circumvent the minimum lot size in a neighborhood, and when we have loopholes like this, it means that developers laugh all the way to the bank, and the citizens have to make up the expense. The second, so we need to fix that. The second issue is, livability is not keeping pace with growth. The last time the city of Canby developed its own park and didn't let a developer do it for us, last time we developed a park was 2005. Since then, our population has gone up by 16% or 3,000 people. But, what people want are walking paths, a dog park, sidewalks, water access, and maintained streets. When it comes to public space, we have over 200 acres of undeveloped parkland, and we do have the maintenance money for it. The problem is that 25% of our park maintenance budget goes to keeping the cemeteries looking nice, and while that's important, I think it belongs in the general fund, not the park maintenance budget. And if we take that out of park maintenance, we can develop some of these lands, including over 100 acres on William River. And the third one is protecting our revenue source. So, when we gave a tax break to Columbia Distributing, they got out of $6.98 million in taxes, but the streets still have to be paved, the fire department still has to do inspections, and that falls on us. Moving forward, we need to fix that problem so that the city gets the revenue it needs, because more companies like that are coming.
Thank you, councillor. Next, we will welcome back Jason Patton. Same question.
Okay. So, in chatting with folks out in the community and for myself, the three that sort of come to mind are as follows. Obviously, supporting business. Businesses are the lifeblood of our city, and there's certain things that we can do to help them succeed. Now, I'm going to put a pin in that one, because that is in part of question three, and I'll go into more details about that. Another one that's important to me and the folks that I talk to is making sure that partisan politics stays out of city council. City council is a nonpartisan position, and therefore, it is supposed to be focused on what you, the citizens of the city, want, rather than some major talking points from a political party outside of the state or even within the state. But, for me, one of the ones that is close to my heart is infrastructure. Anybody on council or anybody at city hall knows that I am the street talk, and I love to watch where the street monies goes and make sure that it is actually going to streets. One thing that Canby has done very well is plan for infrastructure when the economy is high, so that that infrastructure can be implemented and installed when the economy is low, the labor force is flush, and materials costs are down, so that that way, the next time there is a bump in the economy, things are ready to go, so businesses can come in and houses can be developed. It is also crucially important that the city council plant the seeds today for those infrastructure projects that are going to be required in 2030 and beyond. They have done a fairly good job of that, but I think there is more work that can be done.
Thank you, Jason. Next, we'll welcome back to the podium James Heeb. Same question, sir.
All right. Yeah, I got a lot more than three things that are need done here in Canby, but I guess I'll, you know, livability, transportation, and the safety of citizens. I went with livability. Whenever I was looking for buying my house north side of town here, I actually found out Canby is like the number-one rated best place to buy in Oregon because of the affordability of homes and the availability of homes. There's a lot of places where they may be affordable, but there's not a job and, or around the area or other issues, but then there's, there's safety. Obviously, like, everybody needs to be safe. I want my kids to be safe. I want your kids to be safe, and we shouldn't have to worry about anything like that, and I think we are doing fairly well here in Canby. So, I guess number-one issue would probably be transportation, especially with ODOT talking about all this tolling of 205. All that's going to do is divert traffic up and down our streets, and then I know there's been all sorts of talk about the, what do we do with the Canby Ferry? What do we do with, is there going to be a bridge that goes in? And then we're talking about this interchange down in Donald. So, I want to make sure that whenever ODOT comes to Canby and, or whether they come to us or whether I got to go to them, I don't want them to take advantage of our town and put in these toll booths and then wind up doubling our traffic up and down 99E. It's not something I see being good. Our infrastructure can't handle double the traffic, not to mention 80% of our citizenry work outside of town, and, yeah, we already have bad enough time getting to Wilsonville. I know, I've been stuck in traffic going to Wilsonville many times, and it's a, a lot of the time, I feel like just throwing my bicycle in the back of the truck, just in case it's one of them days, so that I can just make it the rest of the way to work. But, yeah, so that's my three, three big things.
Thank you, James. All right. Last for this question, we'll welcome back Jordan Tibbles. Believe it or not, you're going to answer the same question.
Caught me off guard with that one.
I know, I know. I apologize.
So, Canby is a pivotal moment in what will define our city to look like for our children and generations to come. The Portland creep unfortunately is inevitable, with their population growth and the recent exodus we've seen in surrounding cities, as it's become more stable in the city over the years. Families will be seeking safe environments to raise their children with the flexibility of being able to commute into Portland to keep their jobs. Canby is a desirable relocation spot for all of those reasons. In each of the next three issues I outline, decisions will be governed by the following question. Does it make Canby safer? Will supporting this bring our community together? Are we mindful of current residents' property values when determining growth? And does it carry forward the local business approach Canby has always championed? First is livability. We all either moved here or grew up here and stayed here. Either one is because we love Canby's livability. I will advocate for a citizen-centric housing and development approach to our decision-making process. We currently average adding 100 dwellings year over year. We need to prioritize the impact made on current residents' property values when making those growth decisions. Infrastructure improvements, like candidate Patton, I am a huge proponent of road quality, so I'd love the opportunity to work with him on that. I think that we're going to see increased traffic with obviously the investments into the industrial park that we've seen with Caruso Produce as well as Columbia, and I think that being able to be proactive and manage that is our key responsibility as council members. My most important of the three is public safety, which I believe is most critical. Canby is currently in the top 10 safest communities to live for a reason, and it's made so by our men and women in blue, and I think we continue to support them, along with our fire departments, and also a holistic approach in our park upkeep so our children can play safe and be safe in those environments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tibbles. Yeah, just want to thank all our candidates and acknowledge the difficult challenge of addressing three pressing issues in two minutes, and I think you all did a great job. Thank you.
And I'm going to go ahead and just apologize to the candidates and to the audience. That's my beeper that keeps going off. That's the timer where I'm keeping time. Keep forgetting to hit pause before we run out of the two minutes. So, final question before our summations. Jordan, what are your thoughts on how the city can best support local businesses, and how would you expand on those efforts if elected, or in some of the candidates' cases, re-elected?
So, I will echo Mr. Patton because he stole my nice line of the Canby, local business is a lifeblood of our community, and I truly believe that as well. Investing in the livelihoods of our friends and our neighbors that provide goods and service to our community members is what brings Canby together. I also believe there's no such thing as an essential business or an essential worker. We are all essential, and I don't believe the government has a right to deem one person essential over another. Nobody knows what's best for Canby better than the business owners themselves. As such, I believe the government should have as little to do with Canby businesses as possible. With that being said, we are living in unprecedented times to navigate COVID-19 environment, so a good example recently done by city council was the open-air recovery program, which allowed companies to use private parking lots to expand the business area that they could operate, and I would have championed that as well. I think that's a great effort that we should applaud our city council for. Sometimes, Canby businesses like us do the small things, like aiding and cutting unnecessary bureaucratic red tape to help them operate better. Sometimes, they need us to advocate on bigger topics, like allowing and advocating for a large company like a Walmart to come in that would crush local business. Our job plan... Our job plan is simple is to knock down as many obstacles for local business owners as possible to make them be able to have the most efficient and effective way to provide for their families in the living that they choose.
Excellent. Thank you, Jordan. And so the next person we'll bring up to the podium is James Heeb. So James, would you like me to repeat the question?
Oh, sure, yeah.
It's not a problem for me. I run the chamber here locally, so I'm glad to ask the business question. What are your thoughts on how the city can best support local businesses, and how would you expand on those efforts if elected?
I think the city needs to come alongside businesses as much as possible. Not saying that they don't, but with my experiences of being a small business owner, I've dealt with government entities coming, trying to play, trying to like be penalistic or trying to catch us doing something wrong so that they can, I don't know, fine us or something. I don't know that that's happening here in Canby, but I think that there should be a partnership of sorts, and the city should be able to cut as much red tape as possible, make it as easy as possible for businesses to stay in operation, especially through this whole COVID situation. I know Jordan brought up the fact that the council did approve the open air seating for a few businesses here in town that were just having trouble staying. Oh, is that two minutes already? Oh, wrong one?
One minute.
Yeah, and then I think, yeah, just being able to, you know, partner with businesses instead of penalize businesses. One thing that I've thought about with businesses is maybe bringing the permitting process back to Canby instead of letting it sit at Clackamas County. I know I've had to deal with Clackamas County before, and I wound up getting 10 grand into it before I got an answer saying, no, that's not going to work. It's like, you could have told me that from the get-go, save me all that money. But as far as the city, like if the city was able to approve permitting for local businesses versus having to rely on Clackamas County, which, I don't know if you guys have seen Clackamas County on a map, it's massive. They got enough on their hands, and I think the city could handle a lot on their own. I think, yeah, all right, two minutes is up. Thank you.
Yeah. He faked you out initially, but now we are actually at the two minutes. Thank you for your comments, James. So next up, we'll bring up Jason Patton.
Okay. So rather than try and stick to that, I'm just going to shoot from the hip with this one. Yes, it is imperative that we help support our businesses. When I first read this question, the thing that came to mind was owning a business is challenging enough. With everything that's going on right now, it's almost like pushing a boulder up a hill with one arm tied behind your back. And so anything that the city can do to help you as a business owner make things work is great, in my opinion. Some of the things that come to mind regarding the open air seating, I think that's a great idea, but let's face it, the winter and fall rains are coming. So I think it's imperative that the city council do something to help ensure that that can be sustained through inclement weather. Another one that I would like to see is that when I recently came to downtown with open air seating, it was amazing how much that changed the vibrant nature of the community. It made it feel like, it made it feel much more open. So I'd like to see that, those walls torn down so that other businesses are able to put things out to draw people in. Another one is businesses just aren't in the downtown core. There's folks in the industrial park that need help as well as far as continuing to develop the industrial park so that there's shovel-ready project land for when those businesses choose to come here. The industrial park is a humongous economic engine, and we must make sure that it continues to work. Another one is 9090. 9090 has been a problem since I moved here, and I would like to see the city council partner with the state to try and do something like they have done in Oregon City and Milwaukee. I do not understand why that can't be done here. Another one is, what was the other one? Well, that's the red card, so we're just going to have to tease you there, and if you elect me for city council, I'll tell you more.
There you go. Saved by the bell. Perfect.
Saved by the red card.
Saved by the red card. That's the first time the red card came in handy. All right, thank you, Jason. The next person we're going to bring up to the podium is councillor Sarah Spoon.
Thank you, Kyle.
You're welcome.
I've spent a lot of time thinking about this question because I am a member of the Canby Chamber of Commerce, and I do own a small downtown business. And first, I want to tell you why it's important, because a lot of people have asked me, why should the city do anything for businesses? Aren't we capitalists? Shouldn't businesses do something for themselves? And I say the reason it matters that we support and protect local businesses is because the difference between Canby and Beaverton is that we're not just a series of strip malls. And the reason people come to Canby isn't because the commute is easier or convenient, it's because they're looking for a community to be a part of. And that downtown core and the other local businesses outside of our downtown core are an important part of what gives Canby its unique identity as what I like to call the last great piece of Americana. And so as a local business owner, I've thought about three things. One, we can lean into who we are more. The community events that we do from Light the Night, the Big Weekend, the Street Dance, those all bring a lot of people downtown that don't often come downtown. And so if we can lean into that and refocus some of our economic development efforts on finding ways to expand on those events or even add more. We don't really have any events from January until about August, July, August. So finding more ways to bring people downtown to experience downtown so they come back. Second, making it easier for small businesses. A lot of people have talked about the outdoor seating. One thing I did at the last city council meeting is that I requested that we have a sister ordinance that makes it easier to tent those spaces so that through the coming months, those spaces will be usable. And finally, a focus on tourism. Over 500,000 people come to the Clackamas County Fairgrounds every year, and we don't have enough places for them to stay. If we can get people to stay in Canby by focusing efforts, our economic development efforts, on getting a hotel in our downtown and finding marketing as a strategy on educating people on how they can spend their time in Canby so that they really want to come here and stay here and spend money here, that's another way that the city can help our local businesses so that we can keep our downtown identity.
All right. Thank you for that response. Our next councillor is taking the podium, councillor Tracy Hensley.
Thank you, Kyle. Well, my mama always said, lead, follow, or get out of the way. Largely, I think our role is to assist a business is to get out of the way. Bureaucratic red tape and lengthy waits for code inspections, they can be cumbersome and make startup quite difficult at times. We've seen projects and policies created to help our businesses, only to hear later that the business owners felt like we did these things to them rather than for them. I've always told my kids, it's not help if you're not asked. I would like to see a forum with business owners to hear their ideas and their needs, and then I would champion business building policies to assist them in those needs.
Excellent. Thank you for that. And final speaker on this question is candidate Chris Bangs.
Thank you. As I think has been said, a vibrant business community is essential for the livability of a town, particularly a small town, and a variety of different kinds of businesses, such that when you live in a town, you don't really have to leave the town, I think really enhances the quality of a town. And I think Canby is really lucky in that we do have an excellent business community. There are some things I think the council can do, and one of them is I think councillors can play cheerleader. For example, although I'm not a councillor, when all the businesses shut down, statewide ban on dining inside a restaurant happened, I called every single restaurant in Canby that offered dinner and posted the list of everyone who was still open, and then put that on, I think it's called Canby Next Door, one of the social media platforms, and urged people to go there. And you know, this is an easy thing, and I'm not sure how successful that was, but the cheerleader aspect I think is important for the city council. We do a great job focusing on the downtown core in town. I do like the idea of bringing in more of those events that we have because it does bring a ton of people in, and I would like to see us, as I said earlier, concentrate on trying to find partners for some of those vacant places that we have here in town, like the old city hall and the jail and the library. I'd like to see us also concentrate, as Mr. Patton said, on the 9090 businesses. We have a ton of locally owned businesses stretching from the Wild Hair to the furniture store down at the other end of town, including some that aren't on 9090 at all, like Puddin' River Chocolates and Wilco. And sometimes I think our council concentration is really more on downtown at the expense of those other businesses, and you know, we're all in this thing together. I would like to work with those downtown businesses to enhance that, I think it's called stretery thing that everyone else has mentioned, I think it really makes Canby feel like a little Paris community. I'd like to see that permanent and not just a COVID reaction. Thank you. Oh, actually, I think I have to stay.
Yeah, yeah. We're going to freeze here right there, and I'm going to turn the mic over to Tyler.
All right. Yeah, we come now to our last chance to hear from each candidate in form of summation. We have a few things that we'd ask you to try to address. First of all, why you feel you're the best candidate or why you deserve people's vote? Any other final thoughts that you'd like to share? And also, we recognize that there may be people that have questions that we weren't able to get to tonight. It's a little difficult with so many candidates. So if voters do have other questions or things that they would like to hear from you on, how can they get in touch with you? That's a lot, but you get three minutes this time, so.
All right. Thank you. Again, my name is Chris Bangs. To be honest, right now, I don't think I actually am the best candidate here. I think I'm third best. I think that Sarah Spoon and Jason Patton are the best candidates here based on their breadth of experience. I think I offer a middle ground third option. I'm encouraging people to vote for Spoon, Patton, and Bangs. I've actually worked in my head how to say those three names in a catchy way, and that's the best I could come up with. I've been teaching government for, you know, it feels like forever, it's 20 years or so. I'm really familiar with a lot of civic government processes. I teach kids what bonds are, how tax levies work. I teach them parliamentary procedure. So I'm not entirely coming in naive, although I've never had a public elective office here in town. I have said several times now, I offer a clean slate and a non-politically motivated city council candidate here. I say that I threw my hat into the ring because I think that we need some options. I do have great admiration for all of the candidates up here, but I have concerns about the Oregon Firearms Federation, which has endorsed and paid for three of the candidates. This is an alt-right firearms group that formed about 20 years ago because the NRA was too compromising. They want to have people exercise their right to carry guns where I work in the public schools. I cannot think of a worse thing to do for the safety of our students. I think that if you don't believe me on this, you should ask the Canby Police Department and ask how they feel about people bringing guns into the classroom. I don't know how these candidates feel about this, but it is alarming to me. I don't think that's what Canby is. I don't think that's what Canby wants. I threw my hat into the race simply to provide an alternative for that. I am excited about the prospects of serving alongside the councillors and doing my civic duty and giving Canby a platform-free candidacy. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Next up, we'll hear from councillor Hensley. Why you, yes, why you feel you deserve people's vote and any final thoughts and how voters can get in touch with you.
Okay. Well, I'll sum up by noting that I agree that partisan politics have no place on the dais, just as I believe social issues should be refrained from as well. I'm sure that it's been noticed that my views have sometimes differed from those of a few of my colleagues, but I'm proud of the fact that we've been able to have good, healthy conversations for the good of the community, and I'm comfortable agreeing to disagree. The fact still remains at the end of the day, I love this town, I love our community, I love the Canby way. I'm committed to our business owners and our neighbors to protect our livability, and again, I say, I think my track record proves that. I look forward to the opportunity to continue doing so. I truly enjoy working for this community, and I thank you for your support over the years, and again, I ask for your vote.
Thank you, councillor Hensley. Next, we'll hear from councillor Spoon.
Thank you, Tyler. I'm going to spend my three minutes telling you a little bit about who I am as a leader, what I've done, and what you can expect from me if reelected for four more years. First, I'm thoughtful and I'm thorough. I know the information, I know the data, I read the research, and I'm interested, I'm intellectually curious, I want to know more and how we can be better. I'm accessible. In Canby, I don't think of us as Democrats, Republicans, or independents, I think of us as neighbors. And I think that my friendships in town and the people who will call me to get information or ask questions demonstrate that. I'm not afraid to take on big developers, out-of-area developers, and big business. My track record on the dais demonstrates that as well. I'm service-oriented. I started volunteering as a teenager, and I've never stopped. And I will volunteer until the day I die, long after I'm off city council. And I also look for opportunities, not barriers. I think outside of the box. In addition to asking for the sister ordinance for tenting the outdoor seating area, as we're redoing the Locust Street Park playground equipment, I noticed, observed, that we had no wheelchair-accessible swings in the entire city, no wheelchair-accessible playground equipment. And so I asked for, I continued to ask for, and then I think that we achieved, we'll see what the design looks like, the first wheelchair-accessible playground in Canby. This is what I've done as your city councillor. I voted against the Columbia Distributing tax break of $6.98 million because I think they broke the rules and they didn't deserve it, and I didn't think that their profit should come at the expense of residents and small business owners who do pay their fair share of taxes. I took on Icon Construction when they tried to circumvent our minimum lot size, which, while that means more profit for them, what it also means is they were trying to build more houses than our infrastructure was designed to support. And because of the way I challenged them on the dais, they had to go back and redesign the neighborhood and take some of those houses out to be closer to the minimum lot size. I vote for livability, and I fight for it. I fought to get a new wayside plan, that's the 100-acre park on the Willamette River where we could potentially have river access or an amphitheater, more walking trails. I fought and asked to have the cemetery fund taken out of park maintenance so that our park maintenance budget can actually support additional parks. I've asked to advance new parks, and I've protected our street maintenance funds when our previous city administrator wanted to pilfer them to pay for part of the quiet zone redesign. This is what you can expect from me in the next four years. I'm going to continue to fight for new parks. I know that our community wants more walking trails, a dog park, and upgraded sports facilities. I have a commitment to the success of our main street. I think it's an important part of who we are, and I think most downtown business owners know me by name because I go there to do all of my shopping. I will continue to stand up against out-of-area developers because I think that they have no commitment here, no heart here, and they intend to make their money and run. And finally, I'm passionate about the job. My commitment to this community goes back decades, and I wake up every day looking forward to the next way I can serve here.
Thank you, councillor Spoon. Well, next here from Jason Patton. Your final thoughts.
So my final thoughts are this. I encourage you to do your research and read about myself and the other candidates in the voter's pamphlet. I've spent time tonight talking to you to share with you my ideas and visions for Canby if I was chosen to be on Canby City Council. One thing I do want to do is say that when I served on city council, I was often the think outside of the box, push things to the outer edge to get people to think more. And we've talked a lot about helping businesses, but I want to talk about an idea I've had that would help you, the citizens of Canby. As many of you know, when you start to walk outside of the downtown core, the sidewalk network becomes very spotty. I would like, I'm a fan of private-public partnerships, and I would like to see something set up where a portion of the existing gas tax that's collected in the town is put into a sidewalk grant program, where if you do not have a sidewalk in front of your house or it's in disrepair, you can apply with the plan to the city, they will review it, and if approved, based on a master plan of sidewalks in town, you would get a matching grant to help put that in. Because let's face it, concrete is extremely expensive, sidewalks are a huge undertaking. Because let's face it, concrete is extremely expensive, sidewalks are a huge undertaking. I put in a driveway a few years ago, I was blown away. So, that's just some more of the interesting ideas that if elected, I would bring to the table. Now, as far as reaching out to me or learning more about me as a candidate, I do not have a fancy website, and I'm not planning any sort of town halls or anything like that due to the pandemic. But I have set up an email address. You are more than welcome to email me questions or concerns that are relevant to the city council position to jasonpaddeninoffice@gmail.com. Let me just say that again, it's jasonpadden, my name, inoffice, all one word, at gmail.com. I will do my best to answer relevant questions and hear what you have to say regarding concerns and suggestions that you have here in the city. Again, I thank you very much for your time tonight. I encourage you all to fill out your ballot and get that in the box by November the 3rd because the only way that we can affect change is if we actually participate in the process. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jason. Next, we'll hear from James Heeb, his final thoughts.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thanks for that, Chris Bangs. I am one of the ones that am endorsed by the Oregon Firearm Foundation, and I'm happy to, yeah, own that one. I am a very strong believer in the Constitution. So, it's a, and you know what? You're all safe because you're guarded right now by United States Marines. So, I think I'm probably, I don't know, I don't even have to be first, second, third, best candidate, but I think that I could work excellent with Jordan Tibbels, Tracy Hensley, and Jason Patton. I would, I don't know, I've known Jason in passing in the past, and I know he's, yeah, he's reasonable. But I think that I'd be a great councillor because I have strong morals and convictions. I'm a hard worker. Yeah, I'm not going to read my notes about, yeah. All right. Yeah, I have a lot of conservative values. And I work hard, and I care about people. My name is James, I've always gone by James growing up instead of Jim because I was always told that James means servant, and I do want to serve Canby. Yeah, basically, I'll work harder. I'm vain enough to know that I'll work harder than anybody else in this position. I figure if I work and I put my mind towards it and I do the best I can, Canby will be happy with me. So, I think that that's about it. Thanks for listening tonight.
Thank you, James. Finally, Jordan Tibbels, your final thoughts.
All right. Thank you, Tyler. And once again, I want to thank everyone for putting this on. I'm going to take the first, since the rules weren't honored by a certain candidate, I'm going to directly address and own the fact that I am, was endorsed by Oregon Firearm Federation. I didn't hide it, I put it as one of my endorsements, I'm a proud Second Amendment. And I think that candidate's purporting themselves to be not political, and I think that you could just talk to your students who might have had them and see if they feel, as a Christian or conservative, they were treated equitable in that classroom. So, I want to say in closing, I want to thank everyone who put this event on, and I hope to have the honor of presenting you for Canby City Council. For more information, please don't hesitate to reach out to me. You can find me on Facebook, and I have a city council page on Facebook that I'm responsive to. I believe I have fresh eyes and unique experiences that will be valuable to our community, and with all the steps that I take, I keep these four words in mind, "Our children are watching." Thank you.
Thank you, Jordan. We are going to have Kyle Ling back up here to bring us home, but I just want to thank all the candidates for doing a fabulous job tonight, and thank all of you for watching.
Again, I would also like to thank all the candidates for their time and their responses this evening. We hope you, the voters, have enjoyed this experience and that it has been helpful to you in determining whom you would like to see making decisions for the city of Canby. We are incredibly grateful to CTV5 for hosting and producing tonight's event. Thanks to all of our candidates for participating, and a huge thanks to each one of you for your desire to serve our community. Finally, thanks to all of you for tuning in tonight. Thank you for taking the time and making the effort to be an informed voter. Ballots go out starting tomorrow, October 14th, and we urge all registered voters to exercise your right to vote.